Santa help me say, Santa help me say, my wish for Christmas day. Snow is falling down, lights are all around. Oh, everybody's ready for a real good time. Santa stop rapping what you got me. I just got one wish tonight. I got grandparents go to the TV. I got children running around my feet. Santa stop, won't you listen up? One thing on my list that I. I don't need anything beneath the Christmas tree. There'll be jingle bells jingling, a choir will be singing, and it's all gonna happen on a one woman's name. Santa, Santa, Santa help me say, Santa help me say, my wish for Christmas day. Santa, Santa, Santa help me say, Santa help me say, my wish for Christmas day.
Good morning Birmingham, happy holidays. Today is December 6, 2022. The time is 9:35 a.m. I call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today we will have our invocation led by Reverend Q E Hammond, pastor of the Antioch Missionary Baptist Church in Pratt City, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Valerie Abbott. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Let us pray. Our Father, we come just this morning thankful for all of your blessings. For Lord, you've showered us in ways that we couldn't imagine, and we say thank you. Thank you, Lord, for the privilege to live and serve in the city of Birmingham. And our God, as I stand today, I ask that you would bless these proceedings. Bless our mayor, our councilors, all of our city workers. Oh heavenly Father, I pray that you would increase the peace and decrease the violence. Oh Lord, help us to live and love each other as you would have us. In Jesus' name we ask for all of these blessings.
Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Reverend Hammond. At this time, good morning, Mr. Clerk, how are you?
Morning, great.
What you call the role, thank you.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Tate. Good morning, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. President Pro Tem Smitherman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Council President Alexander.
Good morning, thank you very much. Councilors, minutes are not ready for June 21st, 2022 through November 29th, 2022. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Madam President. Morning, Madam President, good morning to the council.
Morning.
Good morning to the public and a special good morning to the Ramsey Rams, champions. Madam President, at this time, I would like to call down your colleague, Pro Tem and representative of District 6, where Ramsey High School is located, Crystal Smitherman, along with Principal Dr. Carolyn Russell and Dr. Mark Sullivan, as well as Coach Ronnie Jackson, as well as Senator, State Senator Smitherman, as well as President of the School Board, Neonta Williams, School Board Representative of Ramsey, Latisha Watkins, Mary Mahomes, School Board Member, as well as Big Walt Wilson. And can I also get the team captains up here as well? Come on up, fellas. Madam President and Council, I got a few remarks, and then I'm going to pass it to Councilor Smitherman to say something. Today, we are in the presence of greatness. I do want to again publicly acknowledge the Ramsey Rams. They are the 5A state champions, y'all give it up for them. And so they, today, Crystal Smitherman and I just wanted to pause, take the time, reflect, and show some love and appreciation to the champions. I have a proclamation that I will not read in its entirety. I'll read in its portion, and then after Crystal Smitherman speaks, I'll let a few other people come up and I'll give you that order. But it states, whereas the last time Ramsey IB High School had a football team was in 1976. The football team was reestablished in 2012, and in 2016 Ramsey won the 6A state championship. Now in 2022, they have won their record state championship under the leadership of Coach Ronnie Jackson. Dr. Carolyn Russell Walker is their principal, and whereas the students have not only excelled on the field, but off the field as well. They have adopted five families for Christmas, fed the homeless in Lynn Park, volunteered at Norwood Elementary School during Read Across America, and visited a nursing home. Players have participated in Future Business Leaders of America to the National Honor Society and the Engineering Academy. And whereas the city of Birmingham is proud to celebrate the Ramsey IB High School football team for defeating Charles Henderson High School with an amazing score of 41 to 20 in the Alabama High School championship, 5A state championship football game at Jordan Hare Stadium. They represented their school in Birmingham well. Now therefore, I Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby issue this proclamation in honor of the Ramsey IB High School football team in the city of Birmingham, and encourage all residents to rise to the occasion and salute these student athletes for a job well done.
Thank you, Mayor Woodfin. You know, I think, what was it, the day after they won, I think I text Mayor Woodfin, I was like, hey, we need to bring them as soon as we can. So I included Principal Walker in the group text, and you know, whenever you get the mayor to respond in group texts, you know, you're having a good day. So he said, congratulations. But I'm not only proud just because Ramsey is in my district, because I am alum and I did play sports at Ramsey. So if anybody understands what you guys have gone through, I do. Because when I was at Ramsey, we didn't have the big gym. We had that little gym, they would cut on the heaters, sky would be so hot, and they do that on purpose. And our weight room, we barely had things in it. We had dust in it. I mean, it was a lot we would go through. And when I was at Ramsey, we won a couple of state championships than they did before. But me and to say Ramsey has always risen to the challenge, right? It doesn't matter what you give us. I feel like with Ramsey, you could give us a bootleg hoop and a basketball, and we'll win a championship. I feel like with this football team, you can give us just a piece of grass, just a couple uniforms, and maybe a ball, and we'll make magic happen. So I'm really proud of you guys, really. You guys, I think this class, you guys have gone through a lot. I know you have lost your gym, and hopefully this is a plug to Dr. Sullivan, Ms. Watkins, that you guys helped them with that gym, right? Because I think they deserve to have not only that facility done, but find you guys land for a new football facility. It's time, right? We celebrate all these other schools, and we make sure everybody else is good, but we gotta make sure our own is good. So Coach Jackson, I'm so proud of you. You know I am. Because I know you guys fell short the last couple years, but you know, congratulations. And Principal Walker, you know, I've known you half my life. So you know, it really means a lot to me that you were able to take all these accomplishments and really just make them your own. So I think next will be, we'll say Principal, Principal Walker. No, Coach Jackson, Coach and Principal.
All right. First off, I want to thank you all for having us today.
He was at football, at sports now.
If you can't hear me, it's because I've been getting water dumped on me in the cold for the last two weeks. So I wouldn't trade it for the world. But again, I'm so thankful. I tell everyone, it's definitely not me, it's him. When we first got this position, I prayed, I got on my knees, and I said, Lord, I can't do this by myself. So I prayed, and I asked for some really good coaches, and I gotta give it up for my coaches. They did a phenomenal job this year. They go above and beyond. And then just our administration, and just the people I have in contact with, Mr. Smitherman, Ms. Smitherman, and just everybody, and everything all came together. And so again, our job as coaches is to make sure we're, I want to make sure our guys are prepared when they leave me. I want them to be different when they leave me. I want them to have character, and I do want them to do what they're supposed to do in their homes when they become men and have their own family. So that's our goal. If we get a championship on the way, I'll take that also. So again, I want to thank you all again for having us. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Mayor, to the best mayor that we could ever have, to our City Council President Alexander, and to my baby and my counselor, Smitherman. And I call this team Hope, because within two years, a brand-new coach with a brand-new team, a brand-new staff of coaches, after losing 32 seniors, they have done a marvelous job. And I tell Coach every time, I believe in you. And when you believe in someone and you let them know, you give them the graces to make it work. Although, as stated, there is, there's a lot that we can do differently. Our team still have more than what the greatest have ever had, and I do appreciate them. I have to commend our Superintendent, Dr. Sullivan, for entrusting me with leading Ramsey and to choosing a coach that would take us to where we are today. So to our team, our coaches, our head coach, to our board members who are supportive of us, and to all of the parents, and not to mention the Falcone and staff who have been extremely flexible. And although academics do come first, they have been flexible, allowing our coaches and our boys to be able to do what they have to do to bring us where we are today. So it's commendable that you would bring us here to recognize this magnificent opportunity. And I will say, Coach, I do believe that we can go back again next year. So thank you.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask our board members to come up and join me. Mr. Wilson, I heard you in the back earlier. Madam President, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, I am so proud of this team. As I look at some of these young men, I was principal at Phillips Academy, and I see some of these young boys, and I remember their little faces when they're in first, second, or third grade. And now look at them, they're looking down on me when I used to look down on them. And these young men are truly what we call scholar athletes. They have high character. I know the work that Coach Jackson can do. Oddly enough, when I, a long time ago, Coach Jackson used to coach elementary sports. And I saw that, the, just the drive that he had around success and ensuring that his athletes had the right type of character, and they brought that to the court. He coached basketball at the time. And we hired him as a middle school basketball coach, and we hired him as a high school basketball coach, and he has never, ever let us down. To our principal of this fine institution. You know, Ramsey has a long history of academic excellence. And as we look for the right person for that school, Ms. Walker's name kept coming up, kept coming up. And she has shown that she can lead Ramsey into the future. I am so proud of her. I'm proud of the support that our board has given to all of our schools, all of our athletic programs. You know, Ramsey is just a first. We got basketball season coming around, and I think we're gonna probably have a couple more teams here at the end of the season. So I am proud of the work that they do. Thank you for recognizing the scholar athletes at Ramsey High School, because they are just indicative of all the scholar athletes that we have throughout our city. I'm gonna ask our board president or representative from that area, if they would say a few words. So you gonna use your time?
This will be quick. We are so proud of you, young men. You guys are the shining star, the pride of Southside, the pride of District 6, the pride of Birmingham City Schools. We are fully behind you, 1,000%. You have our support, you have our prayers. I tell everyone I go, you all are champions on and off the field. We are believing in you. Dr. Walker is your greatest champion. She's your greatest supporter. She's your school mom, school auntie, and you gained another auntie in me. We're proud of you.
Praise the Lord, saints.
Praise the Lord.
I know you weren't ready for that. We gonna try it again. Praise the Lord, saints. Because without him, we wouldn't be here. And I mean that sincerely, because you've heard what has been mentioned about the obstacles these young men have had to go through. Just imagine having to leave school on a bus, go across the city during rush hour traffic to get to a field to practice, to get through at that field, to come back across the city, then get your books and things, and go home and study and get this lesson what they putting on them at Ramsey. That is an accomplishment. These kids exhibit what's the word, student athlete. That's what they are. They get their books on some of the hardest courses that it is, and they prepare and get themselves ready for what we see now as the state championship. So let's give them a hand. Give them a hand for giving it up. The time, discipline, and everything. Next thing I'd want to do is commend, I'm going straight to the point, Coach Jackson. You know, Coach Jackson and I are kind of special. And we're special in that we coach basketball together. We would, we coached basketball together. And I've had a chance to see him coach basketball and football at the same time. Most people don't know, when Ramsey won the championship, scoring all them points, he was the offensive coordinator. He was the one, so scoring all these points is not something haphazardly. He knows how to do it. He's gotten ready to do it. He's a God-fearing man. He takes these kids to nursing homes and rest homes, and they do volunteer work for kids. I want you to know what kind of leader he really is with these young men. So Coach, I want to commend you, you know, for the hard work. You know, I text you sometime around 11:15, 11:30, you talking, I'm looking at film. You know, so I just want to tell you, all the hard work did pay off. And I want to say to the parents of these young men that you all have done outstanding job with them. I see them every day, every day, because I coach up there. So these young men, I see them every day. Many of them on their plate last night, and they gonna be playing tonight. They play basketball and baseball. They're good athletes, and they are good young men. So I want to commend everyone for the effort. Ms. Walker, I want to commend you for being a kind of administrator to let the coaches do what they do and support them like you do. You know, I'm gonna tell them this joke, and then I'm gonna sit down. You know, Ms. Walker, we have a real laser, phase layer relationship. You know, when I'm her senator, there's things I talk to her about, and she shares with me her thoughts, and we try to do what we can do for the whole system, really, and Dr. says that, vouch for that. But when I'm coaching, she's my boss. And so when she called the coaches together and tells us what we gotta do, then of course, that's my boss. So I just want to just say that to you that we have a great relationship, and thank you all for allowing me to speak. And thank you for honoring these young men. And as we begin, we gonna end. All who agree with what we've heard and said, let's say amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President and Council, last but not least, it would only be appropriate to close out for the head of the student, student athletes, whoever's gonna come forward and speak on behalf of the team.
Hello, my name is James Jones, I'm a senior. I don't know how everybody, so I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank God for blessing us with this great accomplishment. But a lot of y'all have said about the student athlete, and a lot of that takes discipline. And I can say with Coach Pop, he has instilled discipline in us from day one. So his leadership has gotten us through this year, got us to this great accomplishment. He's showing us how to be young men, leaders in the community, in the family. He's just a great role model. So yeah, I just want to thank y'all, and thank Coach Pop.
One more.
Oh, how you feeling? How you feeling? Now give me a break now, give me a break now. Well, who we killing? Who we killing? I said, who we killing? Now give me a break now, give me a break now. Now somebody write me a.
Thank you very much. We do have a few counselors that would like to say something. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President, to Dr. Sullivan, the mayor, my colleague, Pro Tem Councilor Smitherman, her father, Senator Smitherman, school board members, and Dr. Walker. I am a Ramsey alumni, but I'm not really, but my brother is. So we traded the halls with Dr. Walker, and so it is great to see a former alumni lead and be the principal of that school. But I just want to congratulate the team. When I saw y'all walked in here, I thought JSU was in here when I walked in here. I was like, okay. So Coach, thank you for, you know, instilling, you know, the leadership skills into these young men. Go out and be great, continue to thrive and strive in your academic achievements, and the sky's the limit. So congratulations to the Ramsey Rams. And I'm just like Dr. Walker, I feel more wins and more championships. So we really appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm waiting on Counselor Clark, I just noticed you gonna say something. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I tell you, you all represent very well. I'm also a Ramsey alum, and we didn't have football in my day. I was a cheerleader for the basketball team. And we did win a state championship, though, my last year there. It was, I was on the math team. So we were champions then. We were champions then, and we're still champions. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you.
Wonderful. Counselor Wood?
Yeah, real quick, just want to congratulate y'all. Like I said, y'all are young and still have so much ahead of you. But you know, there's things that you accomplish in life that people will try to take from you. But this is one thing that can never be taken from you. You'll be a champion forever. Y'all put a lot of work in. I remember seeing y'all this summer, coming out east training with Coach L, and I was like, I know he killing them boys. So you know, very, very excited for y'all, man. This is a major accomplishment, so just keep, keep this in mind. Like I said, you're gonna have more adversity as you go forward, but you'll always be able to draw on what it took to accomplish this and allow you to push through anything else. And for me, y'all probably hear this a lot, but I got into Ramsey, but I didn't go because they didn't have football. They didn't have football, but I did get in, I did get in. But no, I'm just very proud of y'all, man. Thank you for bringing a championship back to the city, and keep striving and keep being great.
Thank you very much. Counselor Abbott?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I do admire your physical prowess in being able to win this championship. But I admire more the fact that each of you has a brain, and you know how to use that brain. And the fact that you can be football players and be champions and still get your schoolwork done, no excuses. I'm sure nobody ever had an excuse. I just think that is the exciting part of this. The fact that you are going onward and upward, and if your knee blows out next week, you don't have to worry that you're not gonna be able to earn a living because you know how to use the brains that God gave you. And I think that that's probably the most exciting part of it for me, because I like a man with brains. Now brawn is okay, I mean, it actually looks good. But brains are what are gonna get you where you're going, and that discipline that the coach has instilled in you, that's what's going to get you through your lives. And when y'all are sitting up here in our places, you know, you look at us and you think we are absolutely ancient and, you know, one foot on a banana peel. Well, you're gonna be here someday. You don't think you are, but you are. So just get ready, and congratulations.
Well, I'll close this out. I just want to say I'm very, very excited and very proud for each of you for the work that you've done on the field and off the field. Congratulations to Superintendent, to the principal, to all of the coaches and the board members. This is such an exciting time for the city of Birmingham. We talk a lot about what Birmingham is and what it isn't, what our youth are and what they aren't. And you all, if a picture was, this is Birmingham, this is what we see today in our youth. So I just want to tell you, keep it going. We're gonna be just really hoping for you and praying for you for your success, as Mrs. Abbott said. If you don't have that success on the field, you'll be able to have that success off the field. Your principal wrote something the other day, and you talked about what is a champion? And we know champion is successes and failures, and you all are succeeding, so we're very excited. Now Coach Jackson, if you'll do me a favor, and you'll come to the podium. I want to tell you all, I did not attend or graduate from Ramsey High School, but I am a graduate of We Know the High School. And We Know the blood flows in his bag, all right? Both of his parents are graduates of We Know the High School. Is that right, Walt? And so we know, I've known Coach Jackson since he was Damien. And the day he was born, we were all at church. His grandfather was our minister, and we had all this excitement. Because he's here, he's here, he's here. And now, when I see him today, and I think of, how long ago was that, Damien? I'm trying to think, we gonna tell your age, because if you tell your age, it means I have to tell mine. But anyway, we're just so excited for you, so proud of you and what you're doing. And when I think of what you do for these young men, when I heard Senator talk about how you take them in and out, and I follow you, you've got some TikToks out there, too. So I'm just excited. I see y'all. So anyway, just very excited for each of you, and congratulations.
Thank you, Sophia.
Madam President, Madam President and Council, that concludes the mayor's report. Before these champions exit, there is one request for them to turn around, so the photographer in the back can get a group photo where those young men are waving their hands. Just for the student athletes, just turn around for them.
And then we're gonna stand, counselors. Y'all can move in together, we're gonna take out. Move on in.
Photographers, if you can wait one second while Crystal Smitherman goes back up to the desk.
Thank you.
Council President, stand up.
Can we move in a little closer now?
Scrooge in.
Scrooge in, suck in, too.
Suck in.
All right, y'all, here you go. Three, two, one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, thank you, Counsel.
We'll give them time to leave.
You're smelling under there.
Under here.
You gonna go and take a. They're going outside, outside in front of all the stuff, such that I can see.
What I was looking at was for these pages. It's all like home, and I can't tell, you know, where the sidewalks.
It has some yellow sidewalks and streets on it.
Now this isn't the one with the yellow one that shows all the infrastructure.
All right, counselors. At this time, we'll continue.
We committed to pay for all the infrastructure on this project.
I think it's gonna happen for a little while.
Right, well, I think I marked that sentence in the contract. I think it's got a great, dramatical error.
All right, counselors, at this time, we'll return back to our agenda. Mr. Clerk, are there any announcements of boards and agency explorations for January?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Counselors, at this time, I do want to make you aware that Counselor.
Councilors, at this time, I do want to make you aware that Councilor Hunter Williams and Chief of Staff, India Bailey, they are traveling to Washington, D.C. They're on business travel to present. A few days ago, three weeks ago, we gave a resolution of expressing honor for the retirement of Senator Richard Shelby. So, they are on business travel to present that document to them. Thank you. At this time, Mr. Clerk, would you read the items that are considered for consent?
Consent agenda for today starts on page two. We have items one, two, three, and five on consent. Skip over to page eight. We have items six, seven, and eight on consent. Please note on the first line, that should be state after the word COVID.
What item was that? I'm sorry.
Item number eight.
Okay.
At the end of the first line, it should be state, COVID state and local fiscal recovery. Page nine, we have items 10, 11, and 12 on consent. Page 10, item 13 is on consent. Page 11, we have items 15, 16, 17, and 18 on consent. Page 12, we have items 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24 on consent. Page 13, we have items 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30 on the consent agenda. Page 14, items 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35 are on consent. And on page 15, we have items 36, 37, and 38 on consent. And please note that on item number 36, it should be a resolution approving the advanced expense account of an appointed city official, an employee. So, add the word of to that line.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Councilors, are there any items you'd like to remove or add from the consent agenda? Councilor Quinn.
Thank you, Madam President. On page two, if there are no objections, I would like to add item four to consent.
Okay, that's a request to add item number four on page two to consent. Is that okay? All right, thank you. Any other items, councilors? Councilor Pro Tem?
Yes, ma'am. On page, was it eight? Can we remove item number eight?
Okay, there's a request to move item number eight on page eight from consent. Any other items, councilors? All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation indicated with the P will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Councilors can entertain a motion and a second for the consent agenda.
Remove approval.
All right, one sec, please. Councilor Abbott and Pro Tem Smithman. Moore and Williams?
Moore and Williams.
All right, one sec. All right, voting should be open now. All right, that vote should be up.
All right, thank you. The consent agenda passes. If you're here for any item that was listed as consent, it has been approved. We wish you a great day, and we'll continue with the rest of our agenda. Mr. Clerk?
All right, should be item eight, first item. Item eight, an ordinance to further amend the COVID state and local fiscal recovery fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023 by appropriating $7,128,048 to competitive grant, match $3,946,772 to administrative costs, $10 million to affordable housing trust fund, $1 million to health food initiatives, and $15 million to enterprise resource planning system per funds received from American Rescue Plan Act. Motion, please.
All right, Council Pro Tem.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to make sure we just gave out some information for the public to know. I know we discussed that budget and finance, but I still want them to know about the ARPA funding.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam President. Good morning to the council again. Madam Pro Tem and Chairwoman of the Budget and Finance Committee is right. These items were shared before B and F Committee Agenda on Monday, November 28. So, what I wanted to do was just give a top-line explanation of these allocations. But before I do that, I just wanted to share with you all and the public that before you is just the allocation of the dollar. We still have to come back before this council related to contracts and detail, et cetera, for each individual item. But with that said, you have the competitive grant match of $7.1 million and some change. As you know, competitive grant opportunities through the American Rescue Plan Act, Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, as well as the Inflation Reduction Act will continue to emerge over the next several years. With that comes an opportunity for us to be aggressive and apply for grants. But as you know, the grant is not 100% funds. They require a match of 20%. So, the city of Birmingham needs to do its part in making sure if we get a grant, we apply for a grant, that we actually have matching funds in place. So, that's related to that matter. The next matter is the administrative support services of $3.9 million and some change. I think this is extremely important as we talk about you all as a collective body and then individually. Supportive services is needed to walk down all of these ARPA projects because internally, as it relates to the administration and manpower, truthfully, we can't handle it all. And so, the selected firm will provide daily staff support to include technical advisory services, expert programmatic and policy advice, as well as review contracts and purchasing documentation, as well as closeout services to ensure funding is retained, resolve requests for information, justification, course audit findings, which I know is important to this body, eligibility appeals, as well as streamlining the reporting process to ensure continued compliance and provide post-war grant administration. The next topic, the next thing under the ARPA-related items are the enterprise resource planning, short ERP system. As you know, we have a desire to be more efficient in not only aligning our internal departments, but what they produce externally for the public customers as well as citizens we serve. I understand I missed this part of the topic last week, but I understand a couple of councilors nerded out in a good way on this topic and got excited about it. But this project will modernize and integrate many of the city's business processes and systems. That includes city accounting, tax and licensing, permitting, human resources, purchasing, project management, contract administration, and business analytics. The outcome of the system will help us deliver more dynamic customer service to our internal and external clients, as I stated earlier. An overall result of this implementation will enhance accountability. The next is something I know you all appreciate, is healthy food access at $1 million. To date, the city investments in healthy food access has focused primarily on grocery stores. But with the ARPA investment in food access, we look to broaden our approach and scope and align with the Biden-Harris Administration National Strategy for Hunger Nutrition, as well as Health, to remove food barriers. Next has been the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Again, as we look to move past just dilapidation, but going more vertical with single-family homes, market and affordable, the development of new single-family and multifamily homes is, we believe, is critical to our city's ability to revitalize our communities. So, with that stated, we look to enhance affordable housing with this trust fund, as well as allow us the ability to leverage additional dollars from corporate and philanthropic funding, as well as federal funding. Last but not least, the Caraway Demolition Site remediation of $3.7 million. I do want to share this one in a little more detail. So, I'll read this first. Demolition on the Caraway redevelopment project has already begun, as you know. Many of you all took advantage of the tour of the site. But the project has experienced a budget shortfall that is hindering progress. This investment will support, I want to be very clear about this, what this money's for. It supports the demolition of blighted properties to make way for affordable and other quality housing, which is in explicit use for ARPA funds. This investment is structured as a forgivable loan. This amendment to the existing Caraway agreement also includes a renegotiation of future revenues incentives in exchange for this additional upfront demolition funding. So, while the council may have a lot of questions about phase one and phase two and phase three in detailed budgets, which I know don't exist today, what I would hope for is that this project is allowed to move forward. So, additional costs is not accrued related to the completion of the demolition, which is why we have before you today. With that, Madam President and Council, that is the top line unless this body wanted me to go on any more detail.
Thank you. Any questions regarding item number eight? All right, we're ready for the vote. Yes, Councilor Woods, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did just want to make a comment. I know we were able to take a pretty good deep dive on last Monday into a lot of these projects. And so, you know, as we've talked about, there's going to be no shortage of important impactful opportunities to take advantage of, leveraging these city federal dollars that came to the city, to make sure we solve some issues that, you know, be long-running, put the city in position to save dollars out of the operational budget in years to come. But I do want to continue to make sure I harp on really just the need to make sure that the $27 million that the councils had allocated is also getting the support to kind of move forward. You know, personally, want to see some of these projects move and get out the door. So, just kind of want to continue to lift that up and ask for the support from the departments as needed to kind of move these projects forward. But I just want to continue to support that and lift that up and ask for help getting that. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. And I do, I feel that we all echoed that, and thank you, Councilor Woods, for bringing that up. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments regarding this item? All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Did you have anything, Councilor? We're ready for the vote.
Councilor Moore, how would you like to go on?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Quinn? I have it locked on. I'll change it. Pro Tem Smithman is out. All right, I think that's everybody.
Yes, it is. Yes, thank you, councilors. Item number eight passes. Next item.
All right. Should be item number nine.
And let me ask you this, Mr. Clerk. Is it, do you think it would be feasible to call nine and 14 together, or should they be done separately?
Are they from same? I'm sorry, I mean.
Similar, sort of some of the funding. Yes. If we could call both of those, thank you.
Item nine, an ordinance to further amend the COVID state and local fiscal recovery fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023 by appropriating $3,700,000 to Caraway demolition site remediation per funds received from the American Rescue Plan Act. And then, we go to 14. A resolution approving the authorized amendment executed for. And as the act says, city in amended and restated redevelopment project and funding agreement with Northside Redevelopment LLC pursuant to which Northside Redevelopment LLC would redevelop the former Caraway Memorial Hospital campus and certain adjoining parcels through the construction of a mixed-use development, which is expected to consist of single-family and multifamily residential hotels, retail office, and entertainment facilities at an estimated cost of $340 million. And the city will provide certain economic development incentives to Northside Redevelopment LLC connection with the project in an aggregate amount not to its C$12,350,000 consistent of the following. An initial cash incentive of $4,100,000 already paid to Northside Redevelopment LLC for land acquisition, demolition, and other blight removal activities. Two, a supplemental cash incentive of $3,700,000 from ARPA funds in the form of a forgivable loan for completion of the demolition and blight removal phase of the project. And three, up to $4,550,000 incentives based on future sales, use, and property tax revenues generated by the city, generated to the city from the project. And that's it. Motion, please.
Move the item. Second.
All right, thank you. I know this item did come before budget and finance, but, Mr. Mayor, if you all could just give us a rundown for those councilors that may not have been present. Thank you.
So, Madam President and Council, what I want to do is just, I guess, give a top-line. You've got two separate things here. Of course, what you all have just voted on is the ARPA allocation, and we told you we would come back to you for those individual items. There is one exception with the Caraway development related to the $3.7 million for demolition, which is before you now open for discussion. And then, a separate item is the, I guess, the funding agreement between the development organization and the city of Birmingham. And so, again, at $3.7, it's pretty clear that needs to move forward to demolition to continue, so those costs don't continue to increase. Related to the, I guess, renegotiation between the redevelopment funding agreement for Northside Development, recall December 28, 2020, so literally two years ago, that the original economic development incentive total packet was $13.2 million and some change, as I explained in a budget and finance committee meeting last week. Today before you, the redevelopment deal has been renegotiated for a total packet of $12.35, and so, it's actually decreased close to $1 million. Part of that, as explained just a minute ago in the ARPA presentation, is that we wanted to make sure we had parity and balance if we were going to increase tax dollars towards the actual demolition. And so, before you, you have the, an initial cash incentive of $4.1 that's already been paid to Northside Development. You have before you the $3.7 from ARPA funds to continue in the form of a forgivable loan for completion of demolition. And then, you have up to, and those words are important, up to $4.5 and some change incentives based on future sales, use, property tax revenues generated to the city from the project.
Thank you, Mayor Woodson. Any questions regarding these items, councilors?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Abbott?
In the reduction in incentives, is that on page 33? Are we going down from $9,110,000 to $4,550,000? It's not 33, it's 34.
Yes, we are. We're cutting it in half.
Okay. And if the developer doesn't have the funding to finish the demolition, what assurances do we have that they have the funding to complete the project? Do we have a, I mean, is there a bond? I mean, how are we going to? I mean, the Budget and Finance Committee, the one thing we don't have is information on the full, we know what the dollar amount of the full projected cost of the project is, but, you know, there are opportunities to come back with the handout repeatedly asking for more and more and more public money. I want to know what, what happens if the project doesn't go through? And how many more times are we going to be asked to provide additional funding?
Let me see if I can give you some assurance, Madam Abbott. Madam President and to the entire body, the city of Birmingham administration doesn't have any more desire as it relates to additional funding towards this project. We believe a total packet of $13.2 million is extremely sufficient and gracious. And it's been a deal worked out, a deal that we started working out two years ago. We've since amended that both parties agree to, which includes this additional $3.7 million. So, to your second question, I don't think you'll see me coming back before you to ask for additional money. I do want to explain this, though. There are city right-ofways and city infrastructure that the city is responsible for, not the developer. So, related to whether you have a major project like a Crossplex or a major project like the Summit Mall, the city infrastructure and the city right-ofway, we are responsible for. So, there may be a time, whether it's sidewalks, traffic engineering with lights, or possible stormwater issue, or streets, that would be our responsibility, not the developer. But that conversation is premature. We don't, not only do we not have a dollar amount, we don't know what we will actually agree to do in that footprint with this new mixed-use of housing and commercial development. But that is separate and apart from an agreement with Northside Development. Related to Northside Development, I don't think you have to worry about the city of Birmingham, the administration coming back before you for any more incentives related to Northside Development. to Northside Development. This first part of your question, can you repeat, please?
And you've covered the second question, except I have more questions. I noticed that it is in the contract that we will pay for all of the infrastructure work that needs to be done in this project. So it's, it's in here, and it says, we're going to give them funding to Northside Development to do the infrastructure work that's identified.
Madam President, I mean, not Madam, Madam President, pointing to you.
Go ahead.
Ms. Abbott, um, that is based on what our team determined, what the infrastructure needs to be for that area. So again, using the example of any other major projects we've done, I think two of the, two examples of major projects we've done, one would be with Bayer Properties at the time, I believe, which is Summit Media. Um, and other would be, um, I guess, we built out the Crossplex, but then we had a deal with Bob Nesbit as well. In any of those situations, of course, there is a development deal. In the language, you're going to see, um, in the contract, you're going to see language related towards infrastructure improvements. Um, but that's just the language. We ultimately are responsible, not the developer, um, for city right of way. And so any dollars towards infrastructure improvements would be actual city property from an ingress egress around the actual site that is owned by Northside Development.
Okay, well, since I've been here so long, I recall that most of the time when we give city incentives, it's so for the developer to fix the infrastructure surrounding their project. And that's what we did at the summit. We did the, you know, we paid for roadways and sidewalks and things like that. In this case, we're giving all our money for demolition, and then we're also committing to do all the infrastructure, which means that this is like a blank check that we don't know what we're agreeing to, but we're talking about agreeing to it. You know, my preference would be that the infrastructure language not even be in here because we don't know what kind of shape we're going to be tomorrow, much less two, three, five, 10 years from now. I think they have, what, eight or 10 years to finish the project. So why are we putting infrastructure in the contract and saying, kind of putting a blank check in there that we'll just pay for all of it?
Well, it's, I guess we would interpret that differently, Ms. Abbott, because we, both parties agree. So a couple of things based on the past history. Again, the city dictated what it would agree to as far as infrastructure. In this project, the city will dictate what we agree to as relation to infrastructure, not the developer. Developer may have a wish list. We, we determine, the professionals and departments such as capital projects and PEP as well as transportation and others, we determine and assess what are the actual infrastructure needs to city right of way on this new project. What we do believe and what we do know, and there are people in here that can vouch for this and verify what I'm about to say, uh, but we believe the combination of the dollars to remove the blight, along with the incentive packet over a considerable amount of year, years, yields a return for the taxpayer, um, related to all forms of ability to generate tax revenues, whether it's property taxes, whether it's sales taxes, even in the form of completing the actual project, um, whether it's costs related to capital needs, et cetera. The city of Birmingham over long term stands to benefit and be rewarded for whatever initial upfront tax dollars we gave to get this project started because it will accelerate growth in this footprint, no different than over the, no different than, as you recall, using the example of Summit Media, I mean Summit Mall, you know, a tremendous amount of resources were given, but the city of Birmingham has made that money tenfold back. This is no different.
Well, absolutely. I mean, this is a great project if it comes off. My concern is if the developer doesn't have the money on the front end to even do the demolition of the blight, where is the funding coming from for all the other phases? I just want to make sure it comes to fruition, and I don't want to be nickel and dime to death because at the neighborhood meeting I attended last night, they said, if you're committing to all their infrastructure, why aren't you committing to all of ours in our neighborhood? And I didn't have an answer because there isn't an answer.
Yes, ma'am. Again, I think that's fair, but I think we are confident, uh, post the demolition phase, um, that you will see that this project will continue. Um, I know this council has been very interested in clawbacks lately. I believe they're very clear, and the contract has been provided to you. Um, so the administration doesn't have any concern, and we have confidence in our, um, in the developer that they will move this project forward.
Okay, well, I don't want to hog all the time, but, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Moore?
Yes, real quick, uh, just wanted to make note of the, uh, correction of the spelling of Caraway in item nine.
It has two R's.
Yeah, just in the synopsis, so.
Tell them, um, put some respect on my name, sir.
There we go.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Quinn?
Um, yes, so I also have a question about the infrastructure piece, and, um, first, first thing is, is, uh, on starting, well, it's under section 5.
Point 1.
Point 1.2 on page 36, um, but at the top of page 37, um, there's a sentence that's very confusing, uh, to me. It's, uh, the portion of it that I'm concerned about is, says, "The city agrees to undertake any infrastructure work in the public right of way or on property which will be dedicated as public right of way, and to provide funding to redeveloper for the designing, engineering, and construction of the infrastructure property is not in the public right of way or which will not be dedicated as public right of way." So a couple of things, I think there's a grammatical error. It, it seems that there's probably a word missing, been omitted or something there. Um, and then secondarily, uh, a couple of concerns. So why are we paying for infrastructure that's not in the public right of way? Um, and number two, um, on many times on development projects, we actually require the developer to address things like sidewalks, um, street scape type things. So I, I see this as an additional incentive. I mean, I can see us taking care of the things like demolishing and straightening 25th Street. Um, but it seems unfair to other developers that we would require them to provide street lighting, sidewalks, and that sort of thing, um, but give a concession on this project.
So, uh, how about this? If it's okay with you, Madam President, to Dr. Darlo Quinn's two questions, um, I'm going to split the answers. I would like Attorney Stanley to respond to the first question related to the technical aspect of the ability to, um, use taxes on, um, tax incentives on private property related to infrastructure upgrades. Related to the second question, I'll come back after he answers that and, and give you my honest assessment and answer.
Counselor Quinn. Jim Stanley from the city attorney's office. Uh, and as the mayor stated, the infrastructure improvements, they're addressed in section 5.12. There is a recognition, the developer may want, or the city may determine additional infrastructure improvements are needed. Uh, it's anticipated most of those will be in the public right of way. And in that case, the city would be responsible for providing for those, for funding and for bidding the work, subject to the bid law. What this section recognizes is that there could also be requests for infrastructure improvements that are not in the public right of way. And so in that case, it's, it's possible under Amendment 772, we, we do this on a fairly regular basis, you could provide an additional incentive to, for them to do that. There's no obligation for any of that to be done, no, no commitment. Again, as the mayor said, they would make the request, city staff would vet any of the requests as far as the appropriateness or the need of it. There would have to be funding sources identified, whether or not we do it, or if funding is provided to the developer, and then it's all subject to council approval. So it's all, there's a number of contingencies before you get to that point. Uh, but the developer had, you know, asked the city to recognize that there could be, um, infrastructure needs in the future, and the city may need, uh, our own infrastructure upgrades just to reflect the fact that there is substantial development going on. So that's what, I, I think there may be an extra word, the word is, I think, maybe in addition, is infrastructure property not in the public right of way instead of is not?
Okay.
Is is, is.
Okay, got it. All right. Um, and, and can, well, I'll let the mayor come back.
So, Dr. O'Quinn, I, I think this is a very important topic that I can wax on about. But I think it requires me to actually be just straight up and like just direct and honest with you all as well. Every project is not treated equally, so I think that's a good base point to start from. You have transformational projects, again, I think we used the summit as, as, as twice, so I'll use it a third time. The summit was transformational for the city of Birmingham in the sense that, um, the property down 280, whether it's the Colonnade or the Target Shopping Center or the Dick's Sporting Goods Shopping Center and a few others that I have not mentioned, um, allowed the continued commercial growth for the city of Birmingham where for each project, but mainly the summit, there was a, a large cash infusion upfront for this transformational project that we know the city of Birmingham has benefited from. Believe it or not, the Crossplex, although there wasn't a developer when the project first started, that was a huge transformational project, uh, for the Five Points West and the western side of town, where there's a huge infusion of cash for the entire site upfront, I think over 70 million. I'm looking for their faces, somebody to confirm, but it may have been more than that. The Northside Development is a transformational project where we know that for a minimum, I have, I have this from my own memory, growing up on this side of town, the first 11, 12 years of my life, there's been huge underinvestment and disinvestment in this entire side of town. North Birmingham, Norwood, Druid Hills, Fountain Heights, Evergreen Bottoms, Vice Hill, Cipico, um, and Hooper City, and so many other areas, Fairmount, and so many other areas that I did name on the entire north side of town. This project is transformational in the sense that the city of Birmingham needs to play a, I guess, a larger outsized role in its initial investments that we know the return will be tenfold, not just for the taxpayer, but for transformational growth in housing and development and commercial spaces in other sides of this city where it increases our population and citizens in the north side of town don't have to leave the north side of town to shop or eat or entertain, et cetera. And so we use our discretion, um, to support this project at a larger infusion of, of tax dollars, cash upfront because we believe that it has a transformational, the ability to be transformational.
Yeah, so no, no question, no argument there. Um, you know, my point is really just that, um, you know, there's, again, there's been several projects that, uh, I've witnessed where, you know, we basically stipulate that a developer, you know, put in certain infrastructure on the public right of way, and, um, you know, so I, I see this in this case, um, I'm just saying, you know, when we're looking at the developer cost and the city's, you know, investment in the project, we ought to include things like, you know, sidewalks and street lighting and landscaping and all of that kind of stuff on our side of the balance sheet, um, just so.
Well, I do, I do want to say that if it was up to the developer, and I don't mind saying this in front of him, it was up to the developer and the city would just, they would, here's a blank check. But that's not what 5.12 says. 5.12 says not only subject to the conditions, but propose infrastructure, it is up to the city's determination through its designated staff. We're not going to let the developer dictate how, what, um, public infrastructure looks like. We're going to dictate if we're using tax incentives.
Right.
Tax dollars, what public infrastructure looks like.
Okay. Um, I've got a, another question, uh, related to the, the amphitheater piece. Um, so that's section 5.7, um, and it's, my concern is, is not addressed in this contract, and I don't know if it's appropriate for it to be addressed in, uh, the contract. But, um, as we move forward with the amphitheater project, I, I think it's imperative that we, um, specify that the, that project be done with the, um, latest, you know, uh, engineering standards with respect to noise pollution.
Yes, you've made, yes, sir.
You know, so, um, you know, we don't often talk about noise being pollution, but, you know, you talk to anybody who lives near a manufacturing facility or railroad tracks or, you know, anywhere, interstate highways, um, noise is definitely a factor. And, um, you know, recently, and over my experience with this project, that's, that's been, you know, the one major concern. And, you know, the last thing that we want to, to see happen is, um, you know, residents who have been in that community for a long time being, you know, negatively impacted or even potentially, you know, displaced because of noise issue. And, and I know there's been a lot of, um, innovation in this field of, um, architecture and design, um, in the last few years. So, um, I, I think it would be, again, I'm not sure if it needs to be addressed in the context of this contract or, okay.
But if, I will finish, so I'll, I'll explain.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, when we get to that step, I think it would be, I would advise that when we're, you know, spelling out our agreement, that we put in a stipulation that that, you know, those engineering standards, engineering design, however you articulate it, uh, needs to be included in our agreement.
Yes, sir. Madam President, may I respond to your colleagues' comments, which I think he, I think, first of all, not I think, but I agree with all your points, sir. So let me start there. Um, and then let me back out. So what you just referred to is a little, probably maybe a lot beyond the scope of this because it's just separating apart. This is, this agreement is with Northside Development, um, related to future talks with this body. Um, that would be a relationship, um, if this council so deems, um, a minimum of a four-way partnership between the city, between BJCC, um, Jefferson County, that's in the county commission, um, city of Birmingham, along the live nation. So that's just separate and apart. Um, but related to those possible future talks, um, I think you're right. For us, um, I want to make two more points to your statements. One is, we look at, we look at a quarter that pretty much starts, um, I would say, west Birmingham and comes north. Rickwood Field, Crossplex, Legion Field, Uptown. These are either outright, three of these are outright city-owned, um, and the fourth one is in partnership where. is in partnership, where although we don't manage the day-to-day, it's, our city is the first letter in it, Birmingham Jefferson Civic Center Authority. And so, as a partner, we make a lot of investments. It's my desire, when I talk about any of the above, to talk about them all together, because I think the city need to be making the necessary investments in all four, as assets related to sports and entertainment as a collective. And no, they are not all in the same place, they are, they are in four different locations. Three are in, right, in the heart of neighborhoods, one being Rickwood, one being Legion Field, where it's outdoors, and the third one would be Uptown, where it's a combination, Legacy Arena, indoor clothes, but outdoor football stadium, possible amphitheater. And so, the sound mitigation, the engineering, is something that we all agree to. But as we look to make upgrades in our other city facilities and investments in our sports and entertaining quarter, which includes historic Rickwood, historic Legion Field, as well as any new additional amenities we put on the Crossplex site, which ideally would be the, not ideally, but where we desire, the Family Fund Center, these are all things we'll be talking about, all four, not just related to there.
All right, thanks. I think that's it, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilor Proten?
Yeah, any comments or questions, I'll leave to the end, but I would like to hear from the developer, more importantly. I know Mayor Whitman has done a great job asking the questions, but I think it's important that we hear from them. Because they did give us really good information at budget and finance, and they can talk about, you know, what kind of led to them asking for additional money, kind of like the deadlines of the demolition, how long this would take, and other like, basic questions you may remember from us asking a week ago.
Good morning, thank you. Give us your name again, if you know who you're representing. Thank you.
Madam President, Councilors, Brian Wolfe with Corporate Realty Development. Hope you are having a good morning so far. Again, to echo the mayor's comments earlier, this is the largest blight removal project in the city's history, and we're very excited. We've been working on this for over six years now. As Councilor Quinn said in Budget and Finance Committee this past Monday, we have spent a tremendous amount of time working through all the various issues that we inherited via this site from its previous owner, and we have resolved all those and purchased this site two years ago this, this month. We are right in the middle of the blight removal stage right now. I'll turn your attention to page eight of the handout that I just passed out, where I wanted to kind of go through some, some bullet points that are very important for this conversation. We are within budget on our blight removal phase of this project. What we've asked the city to do is to trade future tax abatements that were granted in our agreement two years ago for current dollars, and that's because we had contemplated more of a phased approach to demolition over time. We'd rather not do that for a lot of leasing reasons, we'd like to continue on the momentum that we've got on the leasing side, and go ahead and take care of all the demolition at one time. And in order to do that, we have financed a tremendous amount of this portion of the project, but we would like to convert future tax abatements for current dollars, which fortunately the city has ARPA funding, which is allowed for blight removal. So we are trading $4.5 million in future tax abatements for $3.7 million in ARPA funding, which will allow us to go ahead and complete all the blight removal at one time, versus more of a piecemeal execution. That's approximately a 123 to 1 trade for the city, a really good deal for the city. And so we are, that's the crux of the, of the, of the changes to the agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions about anything else that has been brought up this morning.
Councilor Proten?
I know I asked this at Budget and Finance, for example, but your D E and I plan?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Please finish.
No, no, you probably already know what I'm about to ask, just like.
I did go back and look, and I did revise the plan and sent that to Attorney Stanley. I'm not sure if that's in your packet or not.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I did revise that to make it more current.
Okay, good, good. Let's see, and when were you expecting demolition to be completed? Because I know you said there are different phases with the project.
Yes, ma'am. The demolition, the next phase of demolition, which will start, if y'all are generous enough to grant us this, will start immediately this month. It will be done in approximately 200 days from now, so it'll, it'll stretch out into late spring, midsummer, before it's finalized.
Okay. I don't have any more questions. As far as the demolition piece, I will say this needs to be done. I don't think we need a big blight property like this next to a neighborhood, that's not fair to them. And I don't want us to be known for half-completing projects, right? Because that'll affect other projects. So I'm very much for us finishing this demolition. I do think the north side is very underdeveloped and underserved, and I think a project like this, mine is a couple of things with it, like having a grocery store, you know, people have talked to us continuously about Birmingham being a food desert, well, this is a project that will help people in impoverished conditions have really, a really good grocery store, for example. To finish that piece over in Uptown, we have Top Golf, we have the stadium, and now we'll have something else for families to have. So I think we need to really complete that package over there, but also making sure that we continue to prioritize, and, you know, that's a priority for Mayor Whitman, you know, continuing to make sure this demolition is across the board, citywide, and that's something we continue to do. So I don't want the public to think that, you know, we, we don't care about the other conditions of other neighborhoods, it's not that. This is just a significant project where if we don't demolish this, then this will really make our city, our city just needs to be improved, and I think this project will help it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilor Wood, did you want to respond to that, Mayor? Do have another question. Councilor Wood.
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, if you could talk a little bit more about the original demolition plan in terms of a timeline compared to what this shifts you to, bringing all the demolition into one phase?
Yeah, I think if you look on page five of your handout, Phase One was what was contemplated to be done, and it's, it's actually wrapping up right now. And we had originally contemplated phasing Phase Two over time, as needed, as our lease-up kind of moved that direction. As we've gotten into more leasing momentum, what we've discovered is that it's going to be better, basically for the city and for us, to go ahead and wipe out the blight all at one time versus trying to piecemeal it, and that's more of an optics. You know, Caraway Boulevard, it has a very high traffic count, and those buildings that are, that are in Phase Two are fronting Caraway Boulevard. We need to take care of those buildings, so we can, we can just build surety in the leasing community, and in many of the conversations we've had with tenants, that that project is now completed, and now we're on to the actual redevelopment of the project. And so that has been something we've heard loud and clear, and we want to make sure that we saw as any concerns, that that is going to be completed out in the future, that that is going to be completed right now, and they can see it.
I guess, how far out in the future was, was that initially planned to be?
We were going to take it almost building by building. So as we develop deals in each building, the demolition for that particular asset would take place at that time. But what we've learned through the conversations is, well, how do we have surety that the remainder of that will be completed? And the easiest way to answer that is just to get it all done at one time. And frankly, it's going to be less expensive for us to do it all in one tranche versus piecemealing it over time, as I know you can appreciate as a contractor, the additional mobilizations, et cetera, et cetera. The cost comes down, which helps everybody involved, having one mobilization, just allowing him to complete it all at one time.
Another question is more on the city side, as far as infrastructure. Basically, it's a timing question, and how the city's infrastructure portion lines up with the overall project?
It's a very fair question, and the very fair answer is, we don't know, there is no timeline. That's the truth. I mean, just what he says, at least 200 more days before end. Two more, 200 days of demolition. And so even if you consider a July 1 budget, where this will be complete, demolition will be completed before, all the things they have to do as far as development on the site, I think we are far away from the actual infrastructure investment. So that is to be determined. I think I need to not only get with legal and Ms. Smiley, who have been leading on the project, but I think I have to get with the professionals upstairs. Denise Bell, and Katrina Thomas, and James Fowler will play an outsized role in dictating what needs to be, when, when it needs to be, et cetera.
Yeah, because that's kind of the main, I guess, portion I'm asking is more so the when, like, at what milestone in the overall project do we engage, whether it's Phase One, Phase Two, or Phase Three of infrastructure?
Yes, sir. I think, I think we owe them to come back before them and tell them when. But today, we don't have an answer, sir. Madam President, as a point I failed to mention when Dr. O'Quinn talked about, just process-wise, and what we're doing on our end, what I do appreciate about the city's portion in this over the last, I don't know how many years now, maybe not six, at least five, but making sure the development, north side development walk with the neighborhood on this. Charlie Williams is still the, he has been serving as president of the neighborhood. What I can attest to is that the neighborhood, 100% feels included on deliberations, conversations, in the know of what's actually going on. I'm looking at both of y'all, so. Just wanted to note that.
Thank you. I'll go to Councilor Tate, because you have a head.
Just really quickly, I just want to, you know, you know, thank Mayor Whitman and his team, Corporate Realty, for, you know, taking on this development. As a young lady growing up on, in the, on the north side, as Mayor Whitman said, this is a long time coming. Lived across the street from Mac Out the School, frequent Caraway Hospital, many times.
Ice cream shop.
Ice cream shopper, Char House Restaurant. So this is going to be major, you know, for the community. And then leaving Birmingham in '07, and coming back after being gone for 10 years, and still seeing Mac Out the School abandoned, and Caraway Hospital literally destroyed. So I can appreciate, you know, Dr. Caraway and his family, you know, for really coming into that area, being family-oriented, and giving families an opportunity, you know, to work, you know, there, and kids could go to daycare, and people retiring. My aunt retired from Caraway. And so, you know, my grandparents' home is still on 28th Avenue North, and to see my, you know, my mother and her siblings that are still living, to see something like this come to fruition is major. So I do share the concerns of, you know, what Councilor Quinn said, you know, it's so much technology out, and so when people, I don't think people will just dip into a neighborhood and don't think about the noise level of an entertainment complex, when you, you know, we go to Hoover, we go, you know, to these different places where they got baseball fields, and people are doing entertainment, so. And it's good that we are incorporating community voices, and reimagining, you know, what community can look like. So I'm super excited to see something like this coming to the north side, and just, you know, excited to see what else is going to blossom past '65, and, and not continue to dip into, you know, these other areas where we've seen a lot of growth. So kudos to Mayor Whitman, Corporate Realty, somebody that really taken on the opportunity to, to want to invest, you know, into, into the north side. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Tate, I believe Councilor Proten had another.
I think this for the developer, how soon will Phase Two start? So that's the building of the structures.
So we anticipate starting work on the first phase of redevelopment in late spring. We're working on those development deals right now, and, and the leasing that goes along with those.
Okay, what's your anticipate, I guess, completion date for majority of the project?
Well, just as a typical phase would go, it's about a year of planning, so that would end in the spring, and about two years of construction, 18 months to two years of construction, as y'all know, is kind of quite typical. And so, years '24, '25, and '26, there's going to be a lot of things coming out of the ground and being completed on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Wood.
Yeah, I just want to kind of circle back in, I guess, a higher level view, but I think that, you know, in converting these funds to present-day dollars, you know, I think the thing that makes me comfortable with this is the fact that the city is netting dollars back on the back end, so we're basically putting less money into the project, which is, you know, people have to come back to the table. I do want to see, you know, that it is up, it makes the deal more easier to stomach when you're actually, you know, putting the city in a longer-term, better position. But, you know, we're having the opportunity to convert, you know, restricted ARPA dollars and get back later unrestricted general fund dollars, and so, you know, that's another benefit. But I think the overall investment going down is, is probably the thing that makes me comfortable with the deal, and I think that is an important thing to add, like, we are in a position to kind of shift the pot to those funds that will get back on the back end and be able to really tackle anything we want to as a city, so. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Was that it for you, Councilor Proten?
I just want to echo, really, Councilor Wood, you asked a great question when you were asking about the timeline between the infrastructure, what we're going to be doing on the city side, but what struck me was the comparison of the economic impact of the future developments, and what we will reap the benefits from those, from whatever these infrastructure and off-site improvements may bring to that area. I think you look at, one, you know, totally outweighs the other, when you look at outdoor, indoor entertainment, single-family housing, restaurants, retail grocery, and what you think this will do for those residents. I mean, I've never seen this type of project in my lifetime, and so I'm hoping this will impact the future of Birmingham and set a tone that it doesn't have to happen in one side of town, it moves further north. Of course, I want you to come west with something else, Mayor. But of course, you know, this is something different, and the key here is the transformational aspect of this. It's transformational, how we're doing the business of this, as well as how we'll be serving the residents, and what will, the outcome of this will be for the city. So are there any other questions? Councilor Abbott?
Yes, I would like an explanation of parking deck number three, from whoever feels the most qualified to talk about it. Parking deck number three, can you explain why this is in here, and what we're planning on doing, and what it's for, and et cetera, et cetera?
I can explain. And Madam, Ms. Smiley can correct me if I'm wrong. But when we first started negotiating this, Ms. Abbott and Council, there are several decks on this property, how many decks? Four? It's four decks. What we wanted to do was solve for public parking as it related to public events, and the footprint, right? The footprint is rather large. The news is this didn't get in on anybody. So, as it relates to those four parking decks, we consider parking deck three to remain a city asset. However, that would have some tremendous costs to refurb that deck. Do you remember? So somewhere, so it was like, almost $7 million. And so when we considered that, the, when we considered the 3.7 demolition, we looked at everything. We looked at the original nine-something million incentive, that's now before you have, cut in half, and what we continued to do was look at this parking deck, which is to be determined. Will it be a city asset? If so, will you have to pay for the refurb? Or will we do something else? That is to be determined. That's the truth.
Okay, so we can, we can, we can acquire the deck for a dollar, but then we have to fix it, and is it unusable right now? Is it structurally unstable, or does it just need pressure washing and a coat of paint, and fixing some spalling where the concrete has fallen off, or whatever?
Yes, ma'am, the mayor's budget of six and a half to eight is correct, and we had both design professionals and general contractors walk through that deck with us. Just over time, as y'all know, that asset has been selectively demolished by some more creative individuals in our community, and it is completely devoid of any life safety equipment, so it would need all new elevators. It's structurally sound, it probably needs a little bit of repair work in places, it doesn't meet current code in terms of ADA, so there's several things like that that have to be addressed, as well as... have to be addressed, as well as completely new electrical, completely new drainage and plumbing systems. So quite a bit, that's what really adds up to the six and a half to eight million dollars in cost.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
I have more.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Just, we, I just confirm, we require that Northside Development give us a study of all the decks. So again, as it relates to parking deck three, it's just to be determined.
Okay, but that was the one we were going to acquire, and it sounded, you know, really cool. It was a buck, but then there's always.
Costs.
Yes, the devil is always in the details. There also is a section in here that's been crossed out that said that we were going to acquire the property, and that's, that holds.
Can you give us the section, section, please?
Well, I'm looking for it. This thing's kind of long, you know? It's on page 27, item B, and it's crossed out, and it says, "On the commencement's date, the redevelopers shall transfer title to the city of real property shown in exhibit A1," but there is no exhibit A1 attached. So what was that? If we had the exhibits?
Councilor, that was the E, F, and G on the exhibits?
Okay, but we don't have any exhibits because the exhibits were left off of this printed version. Now, we have them on our iPads, but I don't have this big fancy iPad that Dr. O'Quinn has. I have this little bitty ancient one.
Hold on, let him tell you where it's referenced.
No, it says exhibit A1, A1 attached here, too.
Did you say that A1 turned into E and G or?
There were lots, EF and G, that are, they're blocks, they're shown on your, on this map, if you've got it. And just like with deck three, those originally were going to come to the city.
So those were the houses?
That's where the houses is.
Okay.
And when we did the First Amendment to the agreement, we decided we didn't want to even bother taking title to those. There's some development issues, and so we just didn't get involved in that.
Okay, so this document that Chief Mitchell was so kind to get for us this morning, the red line, which doesn't have the, any of the exhibits, this is including all the changes made during all the different amendments so far?
It's a comparison to the 2020 agreement until what's before you today.
Okay, unless I thought this was everything that you did this term?
No.
Okay.
It's a little confusing, too, because we did move some sections around that did not change, so it looks like there are a lot more changes probably than there were.
Yeah, the incentives.
We reorganized a lot of it just to, when we added the new incentives in to make it flow better.
Yeah.
So motion has shown as changes, even though they really didn't change.
Some of it.
Your attachments are in your council.
Oh, I know, but, you know, see, I keep on waiting for it to die, and it won't die. So I guess that means it's a good piece of equipment. The other thing is on page 43, back to the infrastructure improvements in A, 5.12, infrastructure improvements A. The last sentence says, "The city agrees to undertake any infrastructure work in the public right-of-way or on property which will be dedicated as public right-of-way and to provide funding to redevelop or for the designing, engineering, and construction of the infrastructure not in the public right-of-way or which will not be," it needs a "be," "dedicated as public right-of-way." The word "be" needs to be stuck in there, but it seems to me this sentence says that we're agreeing to do this.
Well, there is.
And up above, it says, "Subject to the availability of funding," but, you know, we've always got someplace we can steal some money.
So I would just say, Madam, Ms. Abbott, lawyers right here, I got another lawyer blinking me, "subject to and conditioned upon" is well before that. 5.12, 12, third line, "subject to and conditioned, and conditioned upon."
Yeah, that seems to me we would say, "City will consider" instead of that we agree. I don't, that agrees to undertake.
Not only that, but you have to also approve it.
Well, that's pretty easy. You know, we'll go with the flow here. Okay, well, that's.
Do you have anything else?
That's it for me because the amphitheater is still out there.
All right, thank you. Dr. O'Quinn, did you have something?
Yeah, just, I almost asked about it earlier, but I just want to comment that I was pleased to see the parking deck provision in the contract. I think that's, could be a good deal with us in light, but only in light of our capacity through the Birmingham Parking Authority. You know, the Parking Authority does have the capacity to raise its own, you know, capital. And, you know, if we help them get in position to do that, there's no reason why, you know, we couldn't make the required improvements to the deck, but through the Birmingham Parking Authority.
They're money, not ours.
Exactly, yeah. So, again, I just wanted to comment and say that I think that, you know, is something, a good component of this project.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions? All right, at this time, we're ready for the vote. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Wolf as well, and the legal team, the legal eagles.
This is the vote, I.
Yes, sir, so this is item nine and item 14, correct? Yes. Not yet, not yet.
Vote to be up.
All right, thank you. Both of those items passed. Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and everyone. Next item, I think this is the end of our agenda, councilors. At this time, we'll entertain your comments or announcements regarding your districts. Councilor Moore, can you start us off?
Thank you, Madam President. We have two Neighborhood Association meetings coming up on Monday. Engle Nook Neighborhood Association will meet at the Engle Nook Rec Center at 5:30. Roebuck Neighborhood Association will meet at the East Precinct at 6:00 PM. Kilo Springs Neighborhood Association invites all to join them on December the 8th, 2022, at 2:00 PM at East Glen Nursing Home, as they will be gifting all the residents and singing Christmas carols. I can't remember the last time I heard somebody sing Christmas carols. I'm gonna go out there and sing with them. Leaders of Excellence are having their third annual drive-through, toy drive, December 17th, from 10:00 to 12:00 at Willowood Rec Center. Must register on Eventbrite, and kids must be present during pickup. Parents are invited to join the Department of Special Education to discuss diploma pathways for their students. The meeting will be held December the 7th, 2022, from 1:00 to 2:00 PM via Zoom. We got to make sure we get that link. Also, the next parent and family engagement program, Parent Power Session, is Monday, December 12th. The meeting is at 10:00 AM and again at 5:30 PM via Zoom. For more info, go to the Birmingham City Schools Facebook page or www.bhamcityschools.org. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you so much. Councilor Abbott, are you ready?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Gosh, the next planning and zoning meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December 14th, at 3:30 PM. We still have two openings on the Birmingham Planning Commission. If anyone is interested, they can send their resume and letter of interest to valerie.abbett@birminghamal.gov. The deadline for submission will be December 16th at 5:00 PM for both openings. You do have to be 18 years of age and live within the city limits of Birmingham to be a member. Neighborhood associations, tonight would have been the Forest Park-South Avondale Neighborhood Meeting, but they have canceled that meeting due to the holidays. And I want to ask all residents of District Three to continue to go to our website, bhamdistrictthree.com. And, oh, Saturday morning is the dedication of the Miss Fancy Sculpture at Avondale Park, but they're doing it at 8:00 AM. So anyone who's an early riser can just be out there at 8:00 AM. Unfortunately, I'll miss it because I take my mom to the hairdresser, and all the ladies on the council, and probably the men, too, know how important the hairdresser is to your mother, especially as she approaches 100 years old. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Councilor O'Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. This will probably get announced twice since Fountain Heights is in two city council districts, but I did want to mention that Fountain Heights will be having a tree lighting happening today at 4:30 PM at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. Also, something that I'm very excited about, and I'm gonna preface this with just some advice for us all, I think. So the city is changing, and, you know, we're trying to be innovative, especially when it comes to our transportation systems. You know, I was out on Ninth Street over in Smithfield this morning, talking about how to use the new parking spaces and the protected bike lanes. And, you know, folks over there are still a little confused about how that works, but, you know, we're gonna figure it out. And, you know, my, I think it's important, though, that we try new things, and, you know, I would just encourage the public to, you know, if we want to improve, then we've got to change, you know? And so we're not always going to get it right, but the important thing is that we're trying to get it right. And just, you know, bear with us in, you know, as we move forward and try and make improvements. So one of the things specifically that I wanted to talk about is that we're working, our, the city of Birmingham and BJCTA, the Transit Authority, are trying to get in alignment and design, you know, public transportation in coordination with one another. So BJCTA yesterday launched their on-demand micro-transit using the same company that the city of Birmingham does. Their footprint and our footprint are a little different, and their service is only from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM. What they're trying to do is, on routes where they really see the ridership fall off after that afternoon rush hour, instead of having, you know, the 40-foot, or the 40-passenger buses out there running up and down the routes, they're trying to use on-demand micro-transit to service their customers. So that service started yesterday, and you use the, again, it's the same platform. If you're using a smartphone, you go to the Via app, it has the map there. And the area for BJCTA is just a slightly different shading. So bear with us, you know, as we're, it's a little confusing also because the city of Birmingham just expanded our service area on the east side of town. But, you know, the thing that I wanted to announce was, is that BJCTA just started the service yesterday. I believe the pricing is all the same. Again, the hours are 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And so for that service area, it's really a pretty dramatic improvement because the city of Birmingham's service stops at 8:00. So I probably ought to stop there before I confuse anybody anymore. But the important thing is, is that, you know, public transportation services are continuing to improve, and there's, you know, now an option for even later in the afternoon or the evening for a certain portion of the city. Lastly, I want to mention that there is a Shuttlesworth documentary called "Forged by Fire, Guided by Faith," that will be premiering Thursday, December 15th, at 7:00 PM at the Carver Theater. And this is a film about Reverend Shuttlesworth, and it's a documentary produced by local person who's known to a lot of us, T. Marine King. So really looking forward to that. Again, that's Thursday, December 15th, at 7:00 PM at the Carver Theater. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn. I am glad that you clarified about the Via service that's being provided by the BJCTA?
Yes.
And, because I did see they had a little star that said "the west," and I thought, are they expanding there? But thank you, because I wasn't sure. It was a bit confusing because I knew that we had appropriated funds and for Via ourselves to expand east.
Right.
So I appreciate you clarifying that. I do think the hours of operation would be very beneficial as well to add additional opportunity for residents to have that transportation. So thank you for clarifying that. Councilor Woods?
Thank you, Madam President. I guess continuing the vein of what Councilor Quinn was talking about did. Briefly, just want to thank, I guess, Director Charlotte Shaw over at BJCTA for her leadership. You know, she's doing a lot of great things, but I think one thing caught my eye was they had a, they had an issue, you know, just a problem that was going on over there, and she really stepped up and took that on head-on. And so that was extremely refreshing to see somebody acknowledge the problem and commit to fixing it. And so I did want to thank her for her leadership and just have a lot of excitement and confidence about what they're working towards. A lot of need in transportation, but I am excited for the things they're bringing to the table. Coming up on December 10th, 9:00 AM, we'll be partnering with Rebirth Christian Church to kind of connect families with Christmas gifts. And so if you have a need, you can visit rebirthchristian.org/Christmas2022 and register there to get connected for Christmas gifts this Christmas. Also, kind of wanted to point out, unfortunately, we had a shooting out in the district last night, very, you know, disappointing in the way that we're seeing people operate in just recklessness and just kind of disregard for life. I think that we've got to continue to kind of work on these things. And, you know, for me personally, one of the ARPA projects in the queue is basically $250,000 to go towards public safety cameras. And so just putting more eyes, and if we had cameras at that intersection along that kind of a public road, being able to identify who's doing this and working to get them off the streets as quickly as possible. People that are firing and just shooting guns, they just can't be on the streets. And so, you know, it is what it is. We've got to work to get people off the streets. And so when the resources are in place, we got to get them distributed and expended to go ahead and get some of these resources in place. And so I'm excited about the possibility of what we can do to utilize and leverage some of these dollars. But right now, people are putting literally all kind of people at risk just by settling whatever they think is important. But most of the stuff people are shooting each other over is pretty as close to irrelevant as you can get. And so there's, you know, there's no need for people to be allowed to kind of put everybody at risk like this. And so we've just got to kind of work and prioritize those things and ending that behavior. And so that's, you know, there's long-term things. I think a lot of us have been talking about some of the long-term things that we are putting in place, but, you know, in the immediate time, we got to work together to get these individuals out of our communities. I mean, you're putting so many people at risk that it... I mean, you're putting so many people at risk that it is just not worth it. So, I'll pass it over to Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor Woods. Definitely, your words are well-spoken as far as what's going on in our community and just what we have to do to try to minimize what's going on today. So, thank you. Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, just want to echo, you know, Councilor Woods, you know, the investment has to be made, you know, in preventable measures. And, you know, when you're talking to experts around the country and you're seeing the investments that are, you know, other cities are doing, you know, we just got a great opportunity to continue to make these investments. You know, we doing it, you know, with the Aspen Institute. We also, I'm still in conversation with Clinton Lacy, who is one of the top credible messenger trainers in the nation. And so, that's an investment, you know, that, you know, as a body that we're gonna have to make and, you know, as a city, we're gonna have to make. And getting community engaged, you know, it's super important that we all want what's good for our communities, we want them to be safe, sustainable, but we got to make sure that we being so inclusive and including the voices, you know, and continuing these roundtable discussions with people in community because they are the eyes and the ears in the community, you know, every day. Even addressing mental health issues, you know, a lot of people got angry issues like Councilor Woods say, these people are, nobody's safe. You know, the city's on life support, you know. We are not safe. I mean, and people, and we got to really think about this, you know, when police is our, you know, forces are here, they go. And, but, it's up to people in community to keep their community safe. The people, the police job is to come and, you know, protect and serve, but not, you know, they're not the babysitter of the community, just, you know, you can't depend on them, you know, to be everywhere. You got to be the eyes and ears. And I just read a story where a 10-year-old in Wisconsin shot his mom because she wouldn't buy him a virtual headset. So, we got to, you know, as parents, pull back, say, it's okay to say no. It's okay to say no. But, again, we got to work collectively, and that's gonna take everybody, you know? I'm gonna say it again, it's gonna take everybody from the church on every corner to the, from the schoolhouse, it's gonna take us all. And like Councilor Woods say, and like Councilor Quinn said, we got an opportunity, we got to get it right, you know? And I just think, you know, going forward, that we got to get it right. We got to be real mindful and careful who comes to this, you know, to the council and bring these great ideas. And I'm a measurable person, you know? What have you done to show me that you, you skill in what you say you're doing? You know, I can come in here and say, I'm not a gun violence interrupter. So, you know, we got to be careful even doing that when people come presenting these projects. You got to ask questions, hard questions. And so, let me get some of my announcements. Wileham Neighborhood will have their annual Christmas gathering tonight at 6:00 p.m. at the Wileham Library located at 4300 Seventh Avenue North. The next public safety meeting will be held Tuesday, December 13th at 1:00 p.m. You can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCray no later than Thursday, December 8th by 1:00 p.m. The One Pratt Christmas Celebration will, is going on, gonna happen Saturday, December 10th at the One Pratt Park from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. So, come out and celebrate that with them. And myself and Commissioner Tyson is partnering together on a holiday giveaway, and that's on December 17th, and it's gonna be at the Tuxedo Ballroom located at 2001 Avenue D, Birmingham, Alabama, 35218. So, the boxes will have onions, bell peppers, regular potatoes, sweet potatoes, celery, cabbage, and cranberry sauce complimentary, and also 100 turkeys. So, we doing 100 holiday boxes for families. Also, immediately after that, we're gonna be having the District 9 Christmas brunch, and it's gonna stay a bit at the Tuxedo Room from 12:00 to 2:00. So, all of you all are invited to the Christmas brunch as well. We did run across another opportunity with Hope Inspired Ministries is offering free classes beginning January 3rd in 2023. So, they do, you must be 18-years-old, they doing six weeks of class, they doing internship, workforce training, resume assistance, they helping with SNAP enrollment, assistance with documentation, they're gonna provide lunch daily, bus passes for class and internship and job placement. So, this training with Hope Ministry will begin in January of 2023. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Tate. Councilor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam President. The PIC meeting, committee meeting for today has been canceled. Oakwood Place Neighborhood will meet at Harrison Park Recreation Center today at 4:00 p.m. The Mason City Neighborhood will meet today via teleconference. The call-in number is 712-770-8017, and the code is 843426. The North Tittysville Neighborhood will meet at Memorial Park Recreation Center on Wednesday, December 7th at 5:00 p.m. Tonight, the Arlington West End Neighborhood Community will have their holiday party at the West End Library at 6:30 today. West End Manor will have their neighborhood meeting on Monday at 5:00 at New Hope upstairs, and they're gonna have Jim and Nick's on their meeting. Yeah, I'm excited. My dad's been asking about their banana pudding for weeks, and I say, Daddy, it's this Monday. The next budget and finance meeting will meet Monday, December 12th at 3:30 p.m. in the council chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, December 7th by noon. Emails, submissions to laquia.wilson@birminghamal.gov. The More Than Conquerors Faith Church will celebrate the 12 Days of Christmas with the Heritage Shopping Center this Saturday from 11:02. Giveaways will include bikes, dolls, scooters, skateboards, and more, and I'll be there to bring greetings. Also, today, the Tittysville Branch Library, they are donating 50 new bikes, toys, and clothes for 50 children in the community. This will start at 3:30 p.m. For more information, contact Reba Williams at 205-322-1140. I think you have to be registered in order to get that. And I think that's about it. I do want to say something else to gun violence. You know, I do think cameras are a good initiative, and I could owe Councilor Woods for always finding a quick initiative after any issue or problem arises in his district. I think all of us that bought cameras are about to buy cameras. But, you know, I really would look into, and hopefully we get an update on the monitoring of the cameras, right? The Real-Time Crime Center, I don't think is open 24/7. So, I really kind of would, it is open 24/7 now? Well, they had told us at one point it was only monitored from 9:00 to 5:00. Well, somebody lied to us last year, but they only said it was open from 9:00 to 5:00. But, you know, I think, I would really like to see a piece done by Councilor Tate giving an update on all the different gun violence initiatives she have coming up. And I say that because a lot of constituents have given up, honestly, they feel like they're kind of stuck in here, and they don't think the council is doing anything. And we are doing a lot of initiatives. So, I know Councilor Tate and I have talked about maybe using the Public Safety Committee for updates, trying to get something more involved, helping us to be more proactive with this. But, I don't want you guys to give up. I do, I do want you all to be aware, there have been a lot of car break-ins, I think they're going to increase, so please do not leave valuables in the car. If you get a box, make sure you take the box out. Ladies, I know the police had told us at one neighborhood meeting, downsize your purse because it's a lot harder for you to get your purse if you don't have one or if you have a small one, and just kind of be aware and be vigilant. Don't get gas at night. Actually, when I was leaving the CAB meeting, the shooting at Finley, I actually saw that. And I was wondering, I was like, why are all these police cars over here? And that's really sad to see that, you know, there shouldn't be multiple shootings at a gas station. You know, that could have been any one of us getting gas, about to run out of it and be caught in the crossfire. So, make sure you guys are being aware and just being safe. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask my colleagues for UC for a couple of quick resolutions. Motion for UC.
How many do you have?
I have two.
Oh, just go ahead and tell them, and then take a motion.
Okay, okay. So, I'd like to offer a resolution of sympathy for the family of Alma Dennis, my sweet Bush Hills neighbor, who made her transition late last week. She was the consummate professional as a nurse at the VA for most of her career, and she was a mentor to my older sister when she was a grad student intern at the VA in the 70s. But, if you knew her, she was a force to be reckoned with as a, in her various roles as a civic leader, and there's a park in Bush Hills named in her honor. She lived a life to be celebrated and not mourned. Her services will be noon Thursday at Sixth Avenue Baptist Church. And so, I'll go to the second resolution. This one is to commend outgoing Thomas Neighborhood President Alonso Darrow, who is passing the baton to Julia Juarez after 23 years of service as president of Thomas Neighborhood. He also, at some point during that tenure, had a couple of years as president of the Pratt community, North Pratt community, and also of the CAB. But, when I was, when I met Mr. Darrow on the campaign trail, he told me he was gonna be the president of Thomas until he can, could bring his whole neighborhood up to modern subdivision standards. You know, half of it has curb and gutter and sidewalks, and half of it still has roadside ditches, but I guess he got tired of waiting on us. But, anyway, really a strong leader that we appreciate. And those are my two resolutions.
UC first.
Okay, if I could make a motion for UC?
All in favor, let it be known by saying ah.
Aye.
And move the resolutions?
Aye.
All in favor, let it be known by saying ah.
Aye.
On the post, thank you.
Thank you. And to, I'd like to invite everyone to please join the Five Points West Community for our annual holiday celebration this Saturday, December 10th at the Birmingham Crossplex. The tree lighting kicks off at 10:30 a.m. at the marquee sign on the corner of Avenue W and Bessemer Road. And after the tree lighting, there will be a parade featuring city school bands and community organizations. Also, you can join me and the Freshwater Land Trust every Thursday morning for a one-and-a-half-mile loop around the crossplex, during which time you can learn about the proposed Valley Creek Trail Extension and/or just get to know your neighbors. We gather each week around 7:55 a.m. at the Starbucks for a light stretch before we begin walking. And all fitness levels are welcome, no registration is needed, you just show up. Also, Create Birmingham is hosting a vision planning workshop on December 8th at noon to help business owners put your best foot forward for your business in 2023. This interactive workshop is an opportunity to establish goals with corresponding tasks and assess current needs for your growing venture. For more information, you can reach out to Create Birmingham at www.createbirmingham.org. While we're on the topic of Create Birmingham, it was recently announced that a Hallmark movie called Naima in Nashville is being filmed in Birmingham and also employing local talent on its sets. The Birmingham Film Office called Film Birmingham is a part of Create Birmingham, and local film production is proving to be an important way that the creative industries support Birmingham's economic growth. So, hats off to Create Birmingham for the work that they do through Film Birmingham. Finally, I want to just point out that Fisk, the Birmingham Fisk Alumni Association is hosting a free recruitment event for Birmingham High School students, grade, age, grades nine through 12. This is the Fisk Sneaker Ball, which will inform students about the admission, the admission process, as well as the process for receiving scholarships to attend Fisk University in Nashville, Tennessee. Fisk University is one of the oldest historically black colleges and universities and ranks nationally as one of the 10 best, the top 10 best HBCUs. The sneaker ball is free and will take place on Sunday, December 11th, 2022, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the W.E. Lucene Event Center in District 6 at 249 Sixth Avenue South. Thank you, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. These are the announcements for District 7. I just want to give accolades to Ms. Ebony Woods at Winona High School. She received a $1,000 scholarship from the Birmingham Athletic Partnership, or BAP. There were several other students within the Birmingham City Schools that were scholarship winners, but we want to congratulate Ebony on receiving this award. Also, the Board of Education voted in October to name the Winona High School Field House and Football Field in honor of former Winona High School Coach Ronald Cheatham. Coach Cheatham coached Winona football for 30 years, so we want to congratulate Coach Cheatham's family in lieu of this accolade and honor in his memory. There are several bulk trash pickup scheduled in D7. Today, the pickup is scheduled for Germania Park. On Wednesday, December 7th, it will be held in Powderly Neighborhood. On Friday, December 9th, the bulk trash and brush pickup will be scheduled for Jones Valley, Hillman, Hillman Park, and West Brownsville. So, please be sure to get your items out, get those placed the morning of if possible so that your trash will be picked up. We continue to be excited about the new trash service and pickups that's going on. We have several of the neighborhoods in District 7. Just as a reminder, you cannot put anything on top or beside the garbage can, everything has to be inside the garbage can. And also, try to be sure it's not near a power line or an object so that they can freely pick up the garbage cans. If you have any questions, you can call 311, or you can call the Department of Public Works at 205-254-2489. There've been a lot of questions on social media, I saw, and Chief, you may want to be aware of this, people still have questions about how to opt-in and opt-out if they need help with their garbage can and getting it in and out. And so, if you just be sure we get that information to our residents, I think it'd be very helpful to them. Thank you very much. All right. And on Friday, December 9th, also, the Gray Solar Heights Neighborhood Association will host their Christmas party. It'll be at the Mirador Center at 7:00 p.m. Then on Monday, the bulk trash and brush pickup is scheduled for Otsmore Valley or the Sand Ridge Neighborhood in District 7. Councilor Tate, I want Babe to be with you on December 17th, but I'll be thinking of you because we will be over in having our annual Southwest Holiday Festival. It includes a parade, we'll have Winona High School bands. We've learned that now we'll have the cheerleaders from Green Acres Middle School, so we're very excited. There'll be a turkey toy giveaway that'll all happen at Hopewell Baptist Church that Saturday, December 17th. Parade starts at 1:00 p.m. We're giving out turkeys, and so that distribution and food boxes, that'll happen at 3:00 p.m. This is in association with the D7 Office, Community First Birmingham, Project Hopewell, and the Southwest Alliance Association. Those are all of my announcements. And so, Councilors, if we could entertain a motion for adjournment?
So, move.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Can't, I apologize. We do have, listen, Mr. Williams, come on, Mr. Williams, we do have one speaker. He's been so patient sitting out there. Thank you, Mr. Williams. You'll call his name.
Charlie, Mr. Charlie Williams.
Sorry, apologize. And introduce. Go ahead.
Good morning, members of the council.
Good morning.
As is the mayor, council president, members of the council, various department heads, members of the audience. I'm Charlie L. Williams, Jr. As of 5:00 p.m. today, I will be president emeritus of the Druid Hills Neighborhood Association, passing off the reins and the baton to a very capable person, Ms. Janice May Cox. And we work very closely together, and so, I just want to let you know that I'm not going anywhere. I just want to share that with you, first of all, since I have a microphone, you know, I love a microphone and working in my neighborhood. However, here's an opportunity to get some help. And I know that this is a busy time of the year, everybody's going to various parties and events, but I just want to share a few, take a few moments to say, we had our first annual Christmas parade on this past Friday. It was a success. And I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you to the city of Birmingham for providing us, Birmingham Police Department, Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service, they participated, and our community resource representative, Mr. Andre Watts. He- He had a lot of headaches with us, but we pulled it off. Special thanks to Commissioner Hugh Tyson, Tad Snyder, the BJCC, he helped us with decorating our tree, provided us with a lift so we could decorate the tree of the park, Birmingham United Neighborhoods, Galilee Missionary Baptist Church, and the Birmingham Mass Choir. The Carver High School Band was there also. We have, our park, Off the Shores Park, had been vandalized, some unauthorized, how should we say it, recycling had been taking place in the park. So, we had to utilize a generator to, for all of our powers and electricals. And would you know it, that our generator worked for only 45 seconds. The band was coming, and we had approximately 45 seconds. But in all things, the good masterworks it out because he provided us with an angel, and that angel happened to be none other than our one and only Councilor Carol Clark. She and her Ford Ranger powered all of our decorations, speakers, microphones, Christmas trees, everything, so that we could have a festive occasion. And hats off to her for being forward-thinking because we could not imagine that we would have that issue. I would like to also thank you as president of the Neighborhood Association, when I leave the mic, I'll be emeritus nonetheless, for believing in my abilities as neighborhood president, but also believing in the city of Birmingham as you make your decisions and weigh your decisions each and every day that you are here. As I was sharing with Ms. Janice Maycox, neighborhood leadership means that folks will have the ability to come knock on your door, they'll hear a bad sound in their neighborhood, they'll contact you as opposed to contacting the Birmingham Police Department, things of that nature. But again, we believe in neighborhood leadership, we have to believe in you, and so on and so on, because we do know that we have a role to play. We can't put everything on the mayor, we can't put everything on you. We have a role to play, and that is it. So, at this time, for a brief moment, I would just like for Ms. Maycox to introduce herself to you.
Well, hello, everyone. I am looking forward to my new role as president of Druid Hills Neighborhood Association. We have a phenomenal neighborhood and phenomenal neighbors. And we have a city council who today has supported this project with Caraway Hospital, and you don't know what that's going to mean to this neighborhood. I am going to be thrilled to go back and report to the neighbors that this project is moving forward, that the demolition is going to go on, and the encouragement, the inspiration that it is going to infuse in our neighborhood. And this is just what we need at the time that we need it. When we talk about crime, crime comes from despair, it comes from people who don't see a future, they don't see people caring about them. These are the kind of things that makes a difference, and we're going to see in years to come, young people are going to come back to our neighborhood, people are going to want to live in our neighborhood, people are going to want to work and play in our neighborhood. So, we thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. I thank you, Mr. Williams, for your service, and we look forward to working with you and your new role, and so, we appreciate you so much. Thank you. A call to service, it's really one that so many people don't wish to take on them, so we thank you for working with us. Speaking of our neighborhoods, I know that Councilor Pro Tem and Councilor Tate, they were at the CAB holiday event, so appreciate you all attending that and representing us well, so thank you very much. And I do want to tell Mr. Williams, I think it was a Freudian slip, on the thing it said, Christmas parade, so I thought he was going to fuss at us because we didn't have a Christmas parade. So, thank you very much. That's why I was skipping. I didn't really, but we thank him. Before we end, I also want to thank our officers on duty, Cedric Pinkert, Micah Blair, and Ronald Bush, we appreciate you all for working with us and keeping us safe today. Now, we can have the motion. How about that, Mr. Clark?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
We have a new vendor launching in the city of Birmingham. The name of that vendor is Lime. They have both the scooters and the electric pedal-assisted bikes, and we're out here today just trying them out. There aren't many things that we can do to reduce costs of living for people who want to live, work, and play here, but reducing the cost of transportation through providing options like this is one of those ways that we can make a real impact on what it costs to, you know, live, work, and play in the city of Birmingham. If we can transition to a city where a car is optional, then we've made a significant impact on somebody's capacity to live here, especially in the city center, you know, where housing prices are significantly more, you know, but if you don't have to pay that additional $10,000 a year to live in the city center, then maybe the numbers start to work for you.
And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Stay safe, Birmingham.
I am going to seriously go off script here for one minute. I could not be more proud of Mayor Randall Wilson and my colleagues in the city of Birmingham to have a vision and a heart to invest millions of dollars right here in this neighborhood. The best is yet to come.
The city of Birmingham partners with Growth by NCRC to build 52 new affordable homes in Pratt City's Shadow Brook neighborhood.
We want people to come to Birmingham, and we want to be able to give them, you know, safe, sustainable neighborhoods and things that you see in other areas, you know, right in their own backyards as well.
Not so that they're unaffordable, but just so that, you know, homeownership really takes hold in these communities, which will result in more people investing in their community, staying longer, investing in the schools, and that sort of cascade of effects benefits long-term the city of Birmingham.
Birmingham City Councilor Latonya Tate says the inspiration for the project came from the residents' determination to make necessary improvements.
Staying steadfast, unremovable on making sure that they rebuilt their community, and I'm so happy to be a part of that and able to advocate for them and push, you know, for affordable homes and more homes, and just exciting things to come to the Pratt City here.
When I go back and think about the year that I ran for office and knocking on doors and meeting some of the greatest people in Pratt City and listening to the cry of what you wanted and what you wanted to see, I am super excited to say that I did not hesitate in American, bear witness to this, that I spoke up for the people and told them what the people wanted. And so, I'm just excited, you know, to be here, I'm honored to serve as the city council, you know, for District 9 and this community, and it's a great day in Pratt City.
And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter,